All right, we are going to call this committee of the whole to order. The Monday, July 22nd, we need a hole. We have one item on the agenda. It is the 2025-2026 budget update. And we have Kristin Travellis here to give us the update. Take it away, Kristin.
Well, good evening, Council President and fellow council members. My name is Kristin Travellis, and I'm the Fiscal Services Director. Tonight, I'll be presenting the budget calendar and giving a high-level update on the 25-26 biennial budget. I have sitting with me today Nate Malone, Budget and Accounting Manager. Carrie Roller, our Finance Administrator, was supposed to co-present with me this evening, but unfortunately, she is out sick, and so I will be covering her slides as well. Nate and I will do our best to answer any questions that you may have at the close of the presentation, but we may need to follow up with you afterward if we do not have an answer. Finian budget timeline shows what we have accomplished so far and what we have left to accomplish before the final budget adoption. In May, Finance prepared position budgeting for the biennium, and that was to capture any salary-related changes. This would include incorporating healthcare premium increases and cost of living adjustments. We then created the baseline budget, and that is a roll forward of the prior-year budget as a foundation for departments to build upon. In June, the city partnered with a market research expert to conduct a citywide budget survey for seeking input from citizens. We also began our capital investment program and operating budget planning with departments to identify upcoming needs and begin allocating budget to the appropriate line items and categories within our accounting system. In July, the CIP prioritization by departments is finalized, and then it is reviewed by the executive leadership team for funding consideration. Currently, Finance is also preparing our revenue outlook and a long-range forecast to identify available resources for allocation. We're here this evening for a Committee of the Whole presentation on budget development, where we will also present the budget considerations and priorities, some of our revenue assumptions, and the budget calendar. And this evening, we will be having our first public hearing. In August and September, departments will finalize their budget proposals. The mayor makes the final decision on the proposed budget, and City Clerk publishes the public hearing calendar. In October, the mayor will deliver the budget message and the preliminary budget to council, followed by several Committee of the Whole department presentations. There is a public hearing on the preliminary budget and revenue sources, as well as a second public hearing on the final 2025-26 budget. November and December is when we have introduction and enactment of budget-related legislation, such as the Committee of the Whole Report and ordinances for biennial budget, property tax, and fee or rate adjustments. Lastly, the budget is publicized by January 31st after our 2024 financials become available. During the budget development process, we evaluate two types of budget requests. We have new requests and we have ongoing requests. Any new budget request should first align with the city's business plan, vision, mission, and goals before being brought forth for consideration. Secondly, new budget requests will need to ensure dollars requested are balanced with the associated need and considers any new revenue sources. The ongoing budget request should not utilize one-time revenue or reserves to fund ongoing needs, as we need to ensure that we have a spend plan that considers out years for funding of requests. During the budget development, departments will also consider prior-year spend and then identically allocated budget, or perhaps that money can be shifted to other city areas with a higher need. Lastly, the departments will consider reallocation of budget from unspent or underutilized categories to use in other areas to support new programs or needs. A very large component of the budget is the Capital Investment Program. It's also referred to as the CIP. The CIP is a six-year financial planning tool which identifies future capital investments and potential strategies for funding those investments. The CIP also satisfies various requirements of cities' planning under Washington State's Growth Management Act, such as Renton. The CIP encompasses a variety of initiatives that are geared toward enhancing, expanding, and preserving the city's infrastructure and facilities. New this year, we have provided better direction and guidance to staff surrounding prioritization of capital projects that more easily connect priorities with city goals and objectives. Staff recommendations will first consider a subset of strategies that are designed to help deliver the most critical list of projects that also factor in any uncertainty around current economic conditions. This would include designating funding to preserve existing infrastructure, public health or safety programs or operations, implementing projects that identify future anticipated grants or highly restricted funding sources, combining any like projects that would save on funding, inconvenience, or inflation in the future, looking for non-traditional solutions that would move projects forward, and potentially deferring any projects and reprioritizing funding if high inflation were to continue. Once these core strategies have been considered, the capital project prioritization then incorporates the six key areas that you see on the screen that are weighted according to priority and are consistent with the city's adopted business plan, which include compliance, safety, economic, equity, expansion, and sustainability. So it's important to understand the overarching purpose of a city's budget. It is to capture the city's priorities, identify where the money will come from and how it will be spent, outline how the city will provide the services, and communicate information to City Council and the community. Accomplishing these goals ensures accountability, proper resource planning, and good stewardship of taxpayer dollars. This biennium, one of our key budget priorities is to align internal service resources to accomplish department objectives in support of the city's business plan. As a city, we continue to grow, and the expectations of service, both internally and externally, must be met. We have grown in services, population, and operational employees. And with those increases, our complexity of work, risk, and need for employee care has also increased, and the demand for service has never been higher. To maintain exceptional service levels, internal support such as finance, human resources, legal, and information technology must also be addressed. Having effective community engagement in the biennium budget is important to the city. It creates a vehicle for participation in local democracy by giving members of the public the opportunity to become directly involved in decisions that will shape the future of their community. This also helps to restore and build trust in government. For the first time this year, the city conducted a community budget survey. The goal of the survey was to gain insights and feedback on how the citizens of Renton feel about the direction and spend plan of the city for the upcoming two years. We've seen many cities move in this polling direction for community engagement to capture more diverse feedback with a wider range of population demographics across the city. As I mentioned previously, the city partnered with a survey expert in market research to develop a set of comprehensive budget-based questions that align with the city's overall goals and objectives. These questions were solicited to a random sample of 12,500 households that is inclusive of all neighborhoods within the city. The data collection ran for approximately six weeks, and it was distributed by mail, email, and text message. To remove any potential language barriers, the survey was translated in five other languages besides English, which was Spanish, Vietnamese, Russian, and Chinese, both simplified and traditional. Once we received the final survey feedback at the end of this month, the city leaders will analyze the results and ensure alignment with budget priorities that are planned for the 25-26 biennium budget where possible. And then we will disseminate the survey feedback to you council members for your awareness of community response. Also new this year, in an effort to promote transparency and awareness to the community around financial information, the Finance Department worked with the Communications Department to create a short, animated informational video about city budgets. The video aimed to communicate and educate citizens on how the city is funded, the purpose of a budget, and the process and timeline of the upcoming biennium budget. Lastly, the city conducts public hearings during and after budget development to allow for specific feedback and possible redirection. Public hearings are open to all community members, and it's a vital process to allow opinions to be heard by council staff and other community members. So as we move forward and compile the city's biennium budget, we aim to be forward-thinking and thoughtfully consider both the revenue forecasts and balancing of new program requests that also take into account the uncertainty of market forecasts. Going into the last budget cycle, we mentioned a conservative approach when it came to revenue forecasts, knowing that we could see a downward dip in the economy. Governments typically lag behind others in overall impact from economic factors. What we're seeing are interest rates continue to be incredibly high. This is slowing construction in our city and impacting development fees and permits. We have seen a 25% decline in both of these revenue sources this year. The interest rates are also impacting home sales, not only impacting REIT taxes that we receive on a percentage of the sales, but also on new businesses. We may see that new businesses are hesitant, especially startup businesses, to borrow money with the cost being so high. And finally, we must consider the consumer. As mentioned earlier this year, credit card debt is at an all-time high, and we're beginning to see the impacts to our sales tax revenues as many consumers have begun to change their spending habits overall. This may be due to the credit card debt resulting in a restricted capacity to continue spend, or it may be because inflation is so high, and there is no longer discretionary funds to use for entertainment, retail spend, travel, cars, et cetera. Although we are seeing that sales tax is coming in higher than conservatively estimated in 2024, we are seeing that it has not increased from prior-year actuals. It is actually currently trending flat. Construction and wholesale industries continue to see strong performance in 2024 as ongoing projects continue to wrap up. We also have non-economic factors at play here. There are two significant global conflicts going on which are impacting cost of goods and how the consumer chooses to spend their discretionary dollars, and federal regulations that are impacting a large business in our city. Based on these market considerations, we have not estimated going forward what we are bringing in this year in revenues as we are anticipating things to go down slightly. Inflation remains sticky but is starting to budge a bit more than earlier in the year. We're finally below 4%, which helps in the cost of consumers, including the city, as we buy supplies and other discretionary and non-discretionary items. Personnel costs are a very large factor for the city. Two of our three union groups are in the middle of negotiations: non-commissioned police, whose contract expired at the end of last year, and the ASME Union, whose contract ends at the end of this year. In addition, we also had a large market adjustment for quite a few positions, which costed almost $600,000 per year, and this was not reflected previously in long-range plans that we had in place. Our vehicle and equipment costs have increased significantly in the past four years. For example, a police car that previously cost $60,000 is now fully equipped over $100,000, which is nearly double the cost. Lastly, our insurance premiums continue to increase at almost 15% to 20% per year. We are self-insured for liability, but we do have a stop-loss insurance coverage which helps to control the cost to the city should any catastrophic claims arise. Primary revenue sources, we have talked previously about our general fund revenue and how reliant it is on business taxes. BNO tax, utility tax, gambling tax, admission tax, and sales tax combined make up almost 60% of our total general fund revenues. Property tax is another large source of revenue, making up nearly 20% of our general fund revenues. The state does restrict how much cities can increase property taxes in any given year to only 1%. However, the property taxes are less impacted by economic factors, and we do have the ability to increase property taxes more if we need to with the banked capacity that we have saved from prior years by not increasing it at the rate that we could have. Our 2024 general fund budget is $136.4 million, which includes some one-time revenue from grants of about $2.5 million. If we were to take out the grants out of this comparison, the overall increase in general fund revenues we are projecting is closer to $4 million for 2025, with most of this coming from BNO tax and sales tax. We had previously budgeted sales tax with very little increase when planning for the last budget. The increase is to get the projection closer to what we are seeing today, but just a bit lower as we are seeing the sales tax growth to be only very small. In discussing the sales tax with neighboring cities, many are seeing about a 4% decrease. Ours is almost even with just a small decrease, so projecting again very carefully as we look forward to the next two years. Property taxes, as I mentioned, we are limited on how much we can increase, so a very slight, you see a very slight increase in 2025. However, we could increase that more if we choose to use banked capacity. We are projecting a decline in permit fees, charges for service, and fines and penalties of about $300,000 based on the current trend. Just as a reminder, the personnel is the city's largest cost of the general fund. It makes up almost 70% of the total cost to the city. We did have significant cost savings in 2023 that was realized from unfilled positions and one-time revenues that came in higher than anticipated. And so we were able to fund a larger portion of the capital outlay in 2024 for large projects such as Liberty Park, the Pavilion, and Rainier Avenue improvements. As you can see, that the discretionary piece of the pie is very small at 3%, which means that if we want to add programs, we may have to decide which programs we should cut or decrease and/or which taxes we would want to raise in order to add additional programs. So this slide just shows the operating cost per capita based on a population of 108,000 residents. Based on the 2024 budget, the per capita cost is about $2,200 per year, or $6 per day. And when we factor in the number of employees that are employed by businesses in the city, the costs are about $1,300 per person per year and about $350 per day. This is about a 5% overall increase in operating costs per capita over the prior year. And as expected, the majority of our operating cost, about 71%, goes to support residents in the area of utilities, public safety, and health. The other areas are close in amount per capita. So we are still working on closing our second quarter, and so we don't have final figures to present out today through the end of June. But in looking at first quarter in comparison to budget, you can see that our revenues in total are right on track at about 25% or 1/4 of the annual budget. As you'll notice, a few of the revenues are more cyclical in nature. For example, property taxes don't come in until April and October. So we are seeing those at only $1.2 million through the end of Q1, and the first quarter of BNO taxes are not due until April 30th. And so that is why you are seeing both of these taxes at less than 25% of the budget. The other taxes are quite a bit more, primarily due to interest income, which is about 9% of that total. Other items within the other categories, such as permits and court fees, are actually below budget year-to-date. Permits decreased about 26% from last year, which represents, permits represent 5.6 million of revenue budget, or 4%. Fines and penalties are coming in 9% below last year. They represent 3.8 million, or 3% of the revenue budget. And charges for services decrease is about 25% below last year, and they represent about 11 million, or 8% of the total revenue budget. On the expenditure side, we are trending well below budgeted figures. This is because we still have some open positions, personnel is sitting at 21% of budget. In previous years, this gap was much more, and so we are definitely making progress with filling open positions. For contracted services, about $9 million of what is budgeted is designated for SCOR jail services and Valley Communications. Another large amount of the contracted services budget is also designated for parks and human services, of which parks expenditures will increase in the summer and fall months, and human services will see more in the fall. Any remaining contracted services are based on project timelines, and they may not directly align with the budget in the first quarter. The other category represents supplies and intergovernmental charges. Supplies, we are trending over budget as we have not increased budget for inflation much in the past years. Transfers are done at the end of the year, and they are typically for one-time items such as funding capital. So where we are at today and where we have to go, now that we have all of the asks of the departments and have our final revenue projections in, we will pull all of the figures together into a total package for a holistic view to ensure that we have a balanced budget. We may need to make some adjustments as many of the figures that we had earmarked for project budgets were estimates for discussion purposes. We will also need to compare our expenses versus revenues and factor them into our long-range forecast. We will ensure alignment of our budget with the community feedback that we've received where possible. And in the fall, we will have council workshops and department presentations to ensure that we have met all of your needs as well. Lastly, we will adopt the budget. So although there's only four steps that remain here, there is still quite a bit of work left to be done on the capital budgeting and the balancing to get us to an adopted budget. And with that, we will now open it up for any questions that you might have. Again, if we don't have the answer this evening, we will follow up and provide you a response.
Any questions, Council?
Mr. President.
Yes, Councilmember Rivers.
Thank you. Thank you for your presentation. I'm really looking forward for the community feedback response because while I received the survey on a text, I have no problems to respond it, and I, for me, was fairly easy to do it. However, a day after, I received the complaint of one of the community members that received it, that he has been living in the city for one year, and some of the questions he couldn't answer because he didn't know the area that want to answer it, and he didn't give a choice to keep moving forward without answering. And he thought that it was very untruthful to just put something there that will kind of deviate the result, and he was, he would have been lying. So he felt very frustrated that he could not continue the survey and his input because of that. And the other one was someone that English is their second language, that receiving on their phone. While the survey can be answered in a different language, the text by itself is in English. So they took a screenshot, and they sent to me and said, "What does this mean?" I wonder how many people who say languages, English is their second language, just received the text and couldn't figure out what it say and just deleted or removed it. And with that, we will lose a lot of that voice of our minorities that is so important that one of the reasons why we decided to do this instead of the citizen advisory board was to include more variational voices. What I'm hoping when I see the results is that we didn't create a situation where we isolate those voices that need us the most. But this was a trial error, an error. But the question that I have is, do you know how many people respond actually that way?
Yes, so we had 470 people respond.
Thank you, and I know that I have, it had a choice to choose your gender and nationality. Thank you very much.
Any other questions, Council?
Council President?
Yes, Councilmember Rivera.
Thank you. To follow up on Councilmember President's question, I did not receive a text, so how many survey texts or how many people were outreach to? I hear 470 people responded. How many of that was out of? If that's the correct way to ask that?
12,500.
12,500, and how was it decided in terms of like who was sent? Was it random?
Yeah, it was a random sampling, and we did not want to resurvey the people that took the community survey because there was concern of survey fatigue.
Thank you.
Member McGurvy?
Yes, thank you, Mr. President. Going back to the Capital Investment Program slide, and I apologize if this was already answered and I walked in a few moments late. How was the weighting established for the six areas? Did we set that? Or I know it's from the business plan, I don't recall if the business plan specifically weighted out.
Yeah, the business plan does not have the weighting, and so we determined this internally based on looking at other cities' capital improvement programs and how they have created their ranking and matrices around these categories. So we did feel that compliance and safety were of the utmost importance, and then ranked the others accordingly.
Senator Vaughn?
Yeah, thank you, Council President. I have a few questions. I guess, this was not my first question that I was thinking of, but since Councilmember McGurvy mentioned it. So the weight of these particular categories, we kind of came up with it based on other cities. So it wasn't a survey that we did that constituted that, those weight. Is that correct?
We did talk to other departments internally, but it wasn't an external feedback on the ranking.
Any other questions?
Mr. President?
Yes, Councilmember O'Hara.
I'm just looking at these weightings, and I have to say that I quite agree with the way that they... I mean, obviously, compliance and safety should be our number one. Equity and economic opportunity. I just, I commend you with how you, whatever you did to come up with it, I tend to agree with it. Other than, I think sustainability should be one point higher.
I had a feeling you were gonna say that.
Just for the record.
Right?
Yeah.
If you have a question, Mr. President?
Nope.
Okay, and in my key expansion, which is meet service demands and provide a high-quality service for each, that should have been way high, you know, to the priorities as well. So I think that that's our priority to provide the best customer service as a city that we can. It doesn't matter the department, it doesn't matter what we do provide. Public safety should be the customer service at the highest level. But anyway, that's my only input about the capital project prioritization. But my question to you is about the department's budget. I know that all the departments are working in different budgets. This is a budget that is gonna be very hard to put together because we have really two priorities by department. Not everything that they want, but everything that we have to be able, have to have to be able to keep running the city at the maximum level. How is this going? How are the departments managing to understand their own budgets and put together the priorities of each one of their departments and other ones?
Yes, so there was several meetings at the executive level for any new program requests. And so the executive leadership team meant several times to collaborate and understand the needs of each department and really prioritize what was the most important for each department, which sometimes meant sacrificing what they needed for another department. But it's been a very collaborative effort, and I'd say it's going really well.
Thank you.
Any other questions?
Council President?
Yes, Councilmember Rivera.
I heard that was the feedback. Apologies. My question surrounds about, kind of, you explained a little bit in terms of what informs the budget. And specifically, in terms of data, we've been looking at trying to see the update of the Human Services Assessment and Plan, which is an extension of the Community Needs Assessment. Was any of the data that's been done in the last couple of years informed the biennial budget here?
I would have to check back in with the department to see how they factored that in.
I'd appreciate it. Thank you.
Any other questions? Councilmember Vaughn?
Thank you. I just have a comment regarding the Capital Investment Program. Maybe because I just had COVID recently, so it's a delayed rainfall here, but I'm concerned, if I'm hearing you right, that these number and weights, we consider these different categories are from other cities versus a survey or actual engagement of our... versus a survey or actual engagement of our community members, if I heard that correctly. So in terms of community engagement, we list these three items. I was under the impression last time that it was more of a participatory process in that there'd be more engagement than just a community survey. Is the administration planning or anticipating of doing a town hall meeting and open house with in-language translation? Any of that creative way of outreach? Because that's a huge need in our community, and I have not seen it done at all.
Yeah, are we, are you referring to the budget as a whole, not, we're not talking about just the CIP?
Yeah, just as a whole.
As a whole. My understanding is the public hearings that occur in October once departments give their presentations would be the opportunity for community members to weigh in.
That would be the only opportunity. Okay.
Mr. President?
Yes, Councilmember O'Hara.
Just to dive a little deeper into the timeline, can you give us an idea just roughly of when we're going to get our binder? Because we also have a comprehensive plan this year, so just the sooner the better.
You're talking about the preliminary budget.
The preliminary, yeah.
Well, it's not, it's, the mayor presents it in October, so we will get a date for you, a timeline.
Any other questions?
Mr. President?
Yes, Councilmember Perez.
I noticed, I know that traditionally you do not give us the binder before the mayor presents the budget, even though you already have it. But yeah, this year is a calm plan, and we're going to have a lot of information to dig in. It's our job to do it. But one thing that I did talk to Carrie last year with a lot of detail was, I get very frustrated because I normally compare, you know, the previous budget with the normal budget, and then when I see copy-paste information, it really feels, I feel that I'm wasting my time. I'm wasting my time. So I hope that this year, and Carrie assured me that she has talked with every department, letting them know that that's not okay, that the priorities of one biennial should be or complete and explain where the goals have been achieved, or if not, why we are going to move it to the next two years and how it's going to be. I mean, the budget should be a comprehensive financial document, not just a document that you just copy-paste and put there because you need to explain what you're asking for certain amount of money. I am one of those freaks that reads the whole, all the pages, and I ask for every line. So, because that's my job, and that's the most important job of a council member, to approve a balanced budget for the well-being of the city and because it's the money of our constituents. So I'm really begging here for, please, passing this message to everybody and understand that this document should be written in a way that our constituents can understand it and they can ask rational questions about where their money is coming. Thank you.
Any other questions, Council? I'll let you close it out. Go ahead.
Yeah, thank you. I have a question regarding the primary revenue sources page, and you mentioned earlier that generally speaking, it's like a 4% decrease, but in Renton, it's a slight. What, in terms of the numbers, you might not have it, but when you say slight, what is it that we can, sorry, that we can kind of look, engage, and see? Is it cutting programs? Is it tax increase? You know, kind of what your projection is as of now, which is not, you know, set in stone?
That to fund future needs, what?
Yeah, in terms of the revenue sources, you were saying there is, there is kind of, you mentioned 4% decrease, right? When you were mentioning in that, when you were speaking to this page. But then you mentioned Renton has a slight kind of downward decrease in revenue.
Well, I think the 4%, oh yes, other cities are looking at, are seeing a 4% decrease in sales tax, but actually Renton is flat, and so we're seeing the same revenues come in as prior year. So we've projected a $2 million for sales tax, a $2 million increase over prior year budget, but it doesn't align with the actuals that we're going to see this year because we didn't want to over-assume what would be realized next year.
Thank you.
President Nate, thank you guys so much. All right, committee holds adjourned. We'll be back in 40 minutes. This is full council.
Thank you.
Thank you.